Welcome to the board meeting of February 10th. Mayor Panieri is presently meeting with a bunch of conference of mayors, meeting with the governor, the governor's office, and will not be here tonight, so if you have me, I'm happy to be here.
I like that.
Fire announcement, fire exits are in the back, please head out to your car, wait in the parking lot till fire or rescue come, and no smoking in here, smoking outside if you need to smoke. What do you have for questions?
Good evening, everybody. We have two approvals. You may recall last meeting that, sorry, trustee Horton's not here, he has some questions about the January 13th meeting, as you see it was 16 pages long, and Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Clerk Detmer is my transcriber, and she did fabulous job, so she did make, I don't know if they had corrections, but at least made them clear on the January 13th meeting, so I need that person to approve this.
Do you want correction, I would guess?
Another one?
Page 15, top, says, second line, the board's attorney received the only approval evidence, actually it should be credible evidence.
I don't think we had credible evidence.
No, it wasn't, it was not, it's not brought us to that level on that.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
And secondly, the board meeting minutes of January 27, 2014.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Yes. And Deputy Mayor, if I could just clarify for those in the audience, that these minutes do not get posted to our website until they are approved by this board, so for anybody that was wondering why they need minutes from the 13th, they don't get posted until that.
Thank you for clarifying. Little stretch across.
Good evening, everybody, hope you can hear me. I don't have much, just the bills, and we have bills from the period of February 7th through the 10th, that's a new cut, total is $383,150, and the five largest of those. The first one is Chesterfield Associates, $67,600, that's for Campbell Street Vault Head, that's where we had an individual that decided to go for a swim with his car, and he went over the vault head and he damaged it. The next one is Future Hallmink's Tax Redemption, $11,972.29. Third one is Sidney Bound, $11,650, Oak Street Rehabilitation. The fourth is Eastern Resourceful Manhole Charges, $11,481.72. And the fifth one is Golden Montello for Diesel Fuel, $9,368.62, and a total $112,072.36, if I have approved.
I believe the 11,000 Sidney Bound, we expect to get back for you.
Yes, yes we do. That's DRT Department Transportation brand.
Yes, sir. Do we, do we get this Campbell Street Vault Head ready now?
Well, the car was stolen.
Oh.
The individual that drove over it was the person that stole it, so the insurance company is not cooperating here at this point, but if we can't get them to cover, try our own insurance company, let's see what they can do.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we have.
Let the officer run, that's all.
That's it, I'm sorry, it's all I have.
We are reopening comments.
A quick question, yes. You have a vote, so we have three, yes, okay.
We have a continuation of the public hearing that was held on January 13, 2014, to amend section 435-43H for eligibility code to regulate the use of sandwich board signs.
Yes, thank you very much. This has been a, a public hearing that's been open for a few weeks now, and have you been getting any comment, written comments?
I have not gotten one written comment.
You have not gotten any written comment from any store owners or residents? Do we have any, anybody here, anybody on the board, want to comment on this at all before we get started?
Just if we, I mean, when we do come, whatever the board decides, we are considering approving, allowing the sandwich, was I think, I suggested to attorney Egan that we put some kind of snow clothes in there, if there's an accumulation on the sidewalk that there wouldn't be a lot to put a bullet out, or even maybe it's harsh and raining, we'll get together for the seventh or eighth of Thursday, if it gets to that point.
I had spoken to attorney Egan regarding liability, can you address a little bit of that?
Well, it's concerning, you know, it's on public property, so you're allowing advertising of private businesses on, on public property, which always could be, is problematic, or if anybody gets hurt. Also, questions about First Amendment and those kind of things, you know, we reviewed the case law very closely, this is commercial speech, which is the lowest protected and the most highly regulated, this is not any other kind of, I mean, it's not really a free speech issue, this is commercial speech, so it is subject to any regulation, reasonable regulation that we put on it.
So, so these businesses don't have the unalienable right to put these sandwich boards on village property?
The courts have been very clear it's not the same, right. Same reason why we have a very extensive sign code against submitted to the ARB.
And as everybody here on this board understands, ARB has been working very hard to regulate sign, signs in the village, and to keep signs looking nice, and keep the village looking nice, and.
All aspects of signs, both signs, permanent signs, blade signs, all signs.
So, you know, a lot of this is just, you know, a lot of these sandwich boards are out there, with no regulation whatsoever at this point, so that's why we're considering this as a public hearing. Anybody else on the board, you have a comment?
I got a comment, yeah. We, we spend tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, and bid money, trying to make downtown look good. You know, we've got planters, we've got garbage cans that are, that are green.
We have benches.
We have benches, and we have countless hours from volunteers, trying to make it look good, and we got 100 sandwich boards, no two of which look alike, which quite frankly, I think make it look pretty shabby, and undo a lot of the good that we're trying to do by making it look good. Now, in my own mind, I gotta weigh that against the businesses, some businesses make more money because they have sandwich boards. You know, if somebody's gonna, on Thursday, they have a two-for-one bagels or something like that, that might bring some people into the store, but that's public property, it's not, the, the, the store owner does not have a right to advertise on that space, we can give them a privilege of doing so by legislation, but right now, it's chaos, and it looks, looks pretty bad. There's lots of villages with downtowns that have no sandwich boards, they look pretty good, some of them, so.
Well, today on my way home, I came down South Ocean, and in front of one business is, you know, the big mound of snow, the plows pushed over, and then balanced precariously on top of that was a sandwich board, like, you know, and it's really not safe, I mean, that could have just like fall out into the road, we've had a lot of wind lately, and I think the liability and the aesthetics are both a big issue.
Trustee Key and I were uptown today, and we counted nine sandwich boards in one area that was probably less than 100 feet, I would say.
Far less than.
Far less than 100 feet, nine different sandwich boards.
And the sizes have gotten appreciably larger than what was in the past, and now one business has balloons type, I mean, when does it end?
By the way, I, I, I know some businesses don't like it, there, there are some businesses who consider them to be down, down market, right, and I'd love to hear from the residents, you know, this is your village, you know, we're, we're reaching out to the business community saying, tell us what you think, but I don't think we've done the same thing for residents, you know, they're pretty ugly.
Positive feedback.
Anybody, anybody from the public would like to speak, Josephine?
You know, business owners need to.
You still have to identify who you are, Josephine, even though we.
I think everybody knows me, okay, Josephine Miller, 276 East Avenue. Business owners need to, they need visibility for whatever they're offering, and the village has concerns about aesthetics and safety, so maybe this is pie in the sky, but have other alternatives been considered? What about something like a chaos in strategic places, where, I mean, it's expensive, and it'll be some trouble to go out daily and put what you need up there, it's certainly a lot classier than sandwich boards, and by the way, I don't have an objection to sandwich boards if they're strictly regulated, but I mean, maybe we should think about an alternative, because I, they do have a need to present their products, and the village does have a right to be concerned, thank you.
We used to have, we used to have a P S, we, yeah, we did have a P S, right.
We were getting vandalized.
Anyone else?
Don, I'm sorry. Good evening, Don Roxman, 60 Commerce Street. I agree, unsightly, the liability aspect, if you're gonna say you can't have a sandwich board on a southeast corner, and everybody else can, that's a problem, but you'll be levering the playing field by saying you can't have them, so nobody will have an advantage of the sandwich board, and, yep, go through all kinds of trouble with the names of the business on the buildings, you try to make it nice, yes, we would be going backwards if you allow it, or continue to allow it.
And that's from a resident, not a business owner.
Can they hang?
Excuse me, Joe?
Can they hang from buildings?
Well, we have signs now, I mean, you look, the Chamber of Commerce is a perfect example, you have Yogi Yama on the second floor, they have the bracket, it's a chamber, Wisteria Lane, and then, Queen City has one, and when the Dove Building, Budget Buy and Sell was redone, many of those businesses, and it looks nice as you walk down, you know, that's perfectly acceptable.
No obstruction either.
But it's not public space.
Dan, thank you.
Good morning, Dennis Ross, 30th Main Street. I disagree with Ms. Burke, but I, I like the sandwich boards, I don't, I don't see them to be an issue, safety wise or whatever, I don't know about the legality, I do, I am in complete agreement with Ms. Devlin's assessment of the one on the corner, that's oversized and the balloons on it, only because people can actually be obstructed from turning vehicles, and I have seen that from walking Main Street, that near misses, that that one needs to be addressed for its location and size, but beyond that, the rest of them, you know, I, I enjoy it, I, I think it makes the quaintness of the village, in my opinion, I know it's in total disagreement with Ms. Burke, but I, I, I'd like to see them, however you regulate them, I hate to see them removed, I, I think that they are part of the village.
Dan?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll back up.
I have the words in, in the picture of the same car.
It's your role, isn't it? Speaking famously.
Child's voice.
Shake your business. You, you are contrarian to the core. David?
Hello, David Kennedy, representing the Greater Patch of Chamber of Commerce, address this 48th Avenue, to Patchah, I can say confidently that the, the chamber's position is not to ban them, to work on trying to regulate them, certainly the majority of the, I agree, there have been a couple of business people that don't necessarily like them, but I, it has the, the call to have them banned from business owners versus have them not banned from business owners, it's overwhelmingly supportive of keeping them, those who don't like them as much, they kind of shrug their shoulders a little bit, say, yeah, you know, I don't need it, I don't care if they're banned or not, there are a couple of business owners like that, but the majority, certainly on Main Street, do want them, particularly the restaurants, because of their daily specials and the changing variety there, what happens at their places from day to day, it becomes an advantage for them to get the word out about it. I think the, the chamber is very supportive of the idea of regulating them, we're very happy, you know, that we were included on a committee, many of our business owners in the chamber, to work that out and come up with some regulations, you know, the committee's really, I was only met once, you know, I've only had one chance to really talk about it, and there's been some good discussions, I don't think anybody's gonna be upset about limiting it to a certain size, and a certain look, and a certain location, I think we would have people conform with that greatly, and I know they'd rather that than have them outright banned altogether, so I would hope that the village would take the comments as they come in, allow that committee to continue maybe to meet, at least propose some kind of specific legislation, and, you know, and see if that would at least maybe solve the problem, give that an opportunity to try that approach first before the village goes toward banning them, and that would be, you know, certainly the chamber's position at this point.
Any other questions for that? Is anybody here a business owner, who would like to speak?
I've already said everything I could say.
Jerry Merle, Bob Allen Avenue, Patchah, I own G Signs of Patchah, you manufacture sandwich signs of that form that you're talking about, but I think they're done specifically in a tasteful way, with some kind of specifics outlining how they need to be made, size, type, style, they can be done tastefully, I think it's something that helps, I also own the building, as a landlord, 92 Main Street, where the county legislator is upstairs, Clarko, and has a wine store on the first floor, and in the summertime, a Pindore might do a wine tasting in their store, it helps let them, you know, advertise for, you know, when we have the Live Fives or the different things showing, you know, people, more foot traffic or walking, it helps give them an extra little bit of push, and it helps pay their rent, it helps pay, you know, for me to keep the building up and kept and nice, I think it's a, it's a part of the thing for the community, I think if we don't, if it's done correctly, it can look really nice.
Any other publics?
Hi, everyone, I'm John Sonner, I am a little bit of a publicist, is Rob Gennarida, hello, I love you. But I spoke, I'd like to David from the chamber and James from the taproom, I agree with the streets are flooded with all kinds of signs of all different shapes and sizes and blocks, I agree that each business should be limited, the one each, it should be placed as far away as I can from people, testing and traffic, however, I feel an outright ban will affect local businesses from reaching their customers, having bought outside is very informative, it can be done tastefully and classy, I have said that chocolate is not correct in the past, as many employees that I have have terrible handwriting, and all the ones I've used in the past are poorly constructed and snap or fall apart from a stiff wind, the plastic ones I now use and several other businesses use are durable and will allow you to use a variation of sign providing different event sales at your establishment. I understand some restrictions must be made, but I also feel complete ban is unjust and uncalled for, while the village has been making progress in recent years, we still lack retail, and a ban would just serve as another reason as to, as to why retail would stay away from, into the Patchah and the place they wish are open. I believe we have a more serious issue to worry about, there's parking, and the lack of garbage disposal on Main Street, and if you drive down Main Street, outside is a garbage container, outside is Dove Building, and every single day it's overflowing, same thing as the Chinese restaurant, so I think that's more of an eyesore than, than a sandwich board. We're gonna enforce the signs of people foot traffic, and let's enforce the ban of bicycle riding on sidewalk as well, because this sign's posted right in front of my business, and every day we get the driving up and down on skateboards, bikes, and everything else, so I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers, what I'm trying to say is, I'm sure a reasonable solution can be reached, there are far more serious issues to be dealt with first, I love that direction Patchah is heading, but I feel there's some restrictions on our right, I know, right ban, which will turn a building into a version of what it should be just later now, so please take our calm, righteous voice into consideration before any decisions are made.
Now, what would you, what would you think of, because you, you are advertising on village property?
Right.
Okay, so what would the, what would the business owners think of if the village charged a fee to advertise on village property?
As long as there's reasonable, I don't see a problem, I mean, we're paying $25, you know, a month for, you know, dumpsters now, so, but, the village, everything that's going on is positive, we're all busy, I, I, I'm happy to say that, I'm busy, I don't mind paying, it's gonna help my business, if, it's not promoting my business, and I'm not benefiting from a sandwich board, then I don't, I don't need a board, I need a sign, but if I'm have a, if I have a lunch special, and I want to advertise, or a food special at night, and the boards that Jerome makes, like, they're, they come off, so you can change it day in, day out, it can be your business and what's going on, so, I mean, if it's promoting my business, and I'm making money off it, then I have no problem.
So, you don't, you see all the, you see all the sandwich boards, specifically on your area, from, from the corner, from, from Budget Buy and Sell to.
He's on the front.
Yeah, to, to maybe Main Street Cafe, there were nine sandwich boards.
Absolutely.
Now, you don't think that's an eyesore?
No, I think it's fine, I said, I have no problem putting restrictions on it, but one per business.
Although each business had one.
Yeah, my brother has two.
Yeah.
Ronnie Jewels has two, with the balloons, I think one is fair, and, you know, it is what it is, you can go through the village, know who has sandwich boards, and who doesn't have too many.
Now, how would you feel if every business in the village had a sandwich board on, on the sidewalk?
If we're all paying the same price, I have no problem with the village.
It's cluttered, or it looks ugly.
It could be an eyesore, sure, I mean, but if there's restriction in how they should look, within reason.
What would you think of, if we could put a restriction on it, it had to be wooden frame chalkboard?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother, I've had the chalkboards in Pennsylvania, and unfortunately they're not durable, and if you could find someone with weak handwriting, get your point across that particular day, the other frames, when it does rain, the chalk's not washing off, something you can keep out there day in, day out, and if it does, you know, get knocked over on a windy day, we're gonna take it in, but I know it's not destined to be four different pieces.
Do you have one of the big bases, the heavy nod to bases, you fill with water or sand?
No.
It's like what they have with the town.
Yeah, it's like that's what Jamie has, the one I have is just a regular.
Do you have big houses, John, from just?
Two by three.
Two by three?
John, can I take your letter for a copy?
Absolutely.
That's what was so over it, and I want to make sure that I have it everywhere. Right back to you. You sure?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any questions for Joe? Any thoughts?
That's it, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
James Mantilla, Nymar Sign Company, I've been in the sign business in Patchah since 1961, a lower in the, I don't know, when we, when I.
Katie was a kindergarten. Katie was a kindergarten, using signs for it.
The reason that storekeepers buy these signs is because they need the business, they're not buying signs because they want to help the sign guy, they need to advertise the product they're trying to sell at the time, and why they put the A-frame signs up is because they're perpendicular to the guy driving and the person walking. I'll give you an example, if you're, the Jewish still on Main Street, by the theater, I mean, a gold, buying gold sign for, well, the signs on the window don't say she does that, the only advertisement that she had was the A-frame sign, but she put it in a place close to the building where I feel they should be, some have them by the street, some have them in the middle, they're all hazard now, some are different types, they're bigger, they're smaller, if you, if you confine it to a certain size, and place it in a certain spot, and have it professionally done, not with the, the chalkboard's a very bad idea, very skinny ride, and you gotta struggle to read, you can't drive a car, I read something that's thin, it's dangerous, leave it with a sign man of some type, to put a real professional two-by-three, I think would be the right size, and you kind of confine it to that, you'll help out the storekeeper, they're taxpayers too, they're paying their rent, or they need the help, that, that's the reason they put these signs up, just for advertising, that's my case.
Anyone else? Just open for Jim, do you wanna, do you wanna say something?
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't find parking.
I know you called my phone.
Thanks for calling me back. Hello, those of you who don't know me, my name is Jim Sarnoff, Budget Buy and Sell, Dove Plaza, I've been running my family business for over 30 years in Patchah, I'm sorry, it's the force in right now, it's raining. What? I'm very fortunate to be one of the first buildings in Patchah to take advantage of the side porch, this administration's done a great job improving Main Street, and I appreciate everything the village has done to help me. I understand the concerns the village has with A-frames, my A-frame was one of the first a few years ago, I agree that this has, has to be monitored better, I'm hoping the village will come up with a mutual plan that will not hurt the new and old businesses that rely on these signs, especially the restaurants and bars. I still believe and have faith in this village, but recently I have tried along with many others to talk about the important issues and terrible parking problem we have, I feel very proud hearing from people from the past.
Can I just interrupt you a second?
Sure.
This is, this, parking is not part of this public hearing.
Well, I just wanna finish up my, about the A-frames.
Oh, it's gonna be in front of A-frames, okay, I just, if you're gonna go into a parking thing now.
Well, I just got a little bit more to read, and I just wanna give you the big picture on things and, and tell you why.
We're not here to comment on parking, we're here to.
You don't have to, but I like to say what I have to say, I called you twice and yet I don't return my phone calls, I figured I'd address it now.
You haven't left me any mess.
Okay, all right.
I don't know what you think.
Anyway, I'll get back to what I was, I feel very proud hearing from the people for the past years, raving about the great things that are happening in Patchah, but now the parking issue is always mentioned in these conversations, people are starting to stay away. I understand Tri-Tech is making a big investment on community, and I am excited about it, but let's not forget the small businesses and citizens, younger and older, who have put their sweat, blood, and tears, and life savings into their businesses, me being one of them, over 30 years. Our first priority should be to fix the floor cleaning for parking, I believe this is not the time to punish people, to punish owners over a A-frame sign, or other, you know, issues, that, I don't wanna get into that, because I don't wanna, that's such a...
I'm upset.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'll, punish owners over A-frame signs when there are customers who have no place to park, I have the faith in the village that this will all be resolved in time, but if this parking problem is not fixed very soon, a lot of small businesses will suffer, let's all work together to resolve the real problem, if any, if anything deserves media attention, like Channel 2 News, pointing at my sign, okay, that I've had there for years, when nobody had signs in Patchah Village, it was nobody coming to Patchah Village, there should be media attention to parking, not A-frames. In closing, I don't wanna. Let's not hurt the great progress this village has made through the years, let's work on the important issues now, like parking, as progress continues in Patchah, there will be plenty of time to address A-frames, raising people's taxes, and other issues, thank you.
I have a question for you, Joe, what would your feeling be if we charged a fee for a sign on village property? Since it is village property.
Look, I understand that the village wants to generate money, and, you know, build, build up the village, but as far as fees and things like that, we all have to be very, very careful, we're, we're at the, the end part of a recession, and we're hoping that this country comes back, and this county, this village, and we're making progress, but if we start getting ahead of ourselves, like the meters, and, and charging people in nickel and dime here and there, it's gonna stop progress, and that's what worries me.
The question is, and this is, this is an important question that we all have to understand, is that these signs are on village property, the village is liable if somebody trips over it, if one of your customers walks out there. If one of your customers walks out the door and trips over your sign, they're gonna sue you, they're gonna sue us. I agree? What?
If it's a windy day.
If it's a windy day and it gets blown and knocks into somebody's car.
I agree.
These are issues that you guys have to understand, and whether you, you wanna understand it or not, there were nine sandwich boards between your corner and the Main Street Cafe, nine. And that's not the only spot, they're all over the place. And I think that this board has to look at these signs, and number one, are they a liability to people who are walking down the street? And the fact that the store owners are advertising on village property, which is, is an issue. Now, you're a businessman, you wouldn't want the guy next door putting his sign on your property. It's not your business model. So, we have to look at that as a board, and I know this board has been dealing with this now for a good long time, and we have more time to deal with it. But I think the store owners can kind of have to come up with a better solution than having a mishmash of sandwich boards all over the village, because I don't know about anybody else, and I'm not gonna speak for anybody else here. I mean, we're, I am this close to saying, look, it's just easy enough to ban them and not allow them. So, let me just finish. And I agree that they, you know, if we can get, if we can get a system and we can get them all together and everybody, uh, commits to it, then it could work. But right now, it's not working, and I don't know anybody on this board, or I don't know anybody that I speak to who say that the sandwich boards are working. So, I think what, what we need to work through, through David Kennedy and, and the, uh, the store owners to come up with a solution. Because it's getting to the point where it's a little out of hand.
I respect that and understand that, I figure, you know, they have to be regulated somehow, some way. I respect that I understand it, but in my opinion, I mean, um, as I said, I just feel that the priority right now in this village is to address the things that help me support my family and everybody else in this village.
No, I understand.
I have the, I'll give you an example, and Jason hasn't even said anything to me, but this, I'm, I'm a concerned landlord for, for my tenants. And I'll be talking to Jason soon. He started the, uh, the yoga shop last year, spent a lot of money, it's life-saving. Sat down with him and his wife when they first told him, he said, "Don't worry about it." Big thing, great things are happening in Patchwork Village. Hang in there, it's gonna be a rough road, I understand. And I gave him all the confidence in the world, he spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in that place. We're not talking about a Tri-Tech guy, we're talking about a small businessman that has the American dream. So, what do I say now? He hasn't come to me when, in my bu, my, my business, who, I've, I've been there for over thirty years. To be honest with you, I'm here fighting for everybody in this village, to be honest with you. Tomorrow, and maybe I shouldn't say this, if you took the A-frames away, it, it's not gonna be a detriment to my business, but, 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 yeah, just admit it, then you can talk, then you can talk, okay? But, but, I'm not selfish. Uh, the Village Idiot, the Yoga Cafe, Tropical Polio across the street, and other businesses that are restaurants and bars who have weekly specials, daily specials, that rely on these boards.
How do we control it?
Well, you, everybody has to sit down. David's a great guy, I've sat down with him a few times talking about this stuff. Everyone has to get together, as one big happy family in Patchwork Village. I'm not going anywhere, God willing, I've been, been here for over thirty years. I'm here to help, okay? From, from the early days when my ugly blue building looked terrible, I sat down with everybody. Dennis Smith, greatest guy in the world, sat down and, and helped me with this plan to beautify the four corners of Patchwork. I was the first guy who made the movement in Patchwork, uh, one of the first. I don't wanna pat myself on the back. I spent a ton of money, a lot of money that I'm not gonna see for years, for the better of Patchwork. I am here today to fight for the people of Patchwork, because I've been here, my father used to walk the police beat here in the late seventies and early eighties. I remember the days when people used to come and go to Patchwork Theater, and we actually kept our business open till nine o'clock at night because it was actually worthwhile keeping open. Then I saw the deterioration through the years. From nine o'clock, my dad and I sat down and said, "It's time to close at eight-thirty." "Time to close at eight," then seven-thirty, eight, all the way down to I close at five o'clock on Fridays. You know what? It's, it is what it is, but I'm trying, I'm trying to talk on behalf of the other business owners who want their business to grow like mine has the past thirty years. And I think if everybody sits down and comes to, uh, an understanding, maybe a safe sign, something, where, but as you said before, you said, "Well, there should be a fee, how would you like if somebody put something on your property?" Let me tell you, I pay a lot of money in taxes in Patchwork Village. My taxes have gone up a lot of money this past year because the so-called Suffolk County Water, the, the use, uh, that alone, my taxes went up five thousand. I didn't come here like a reaving lunatic, which I should have, very upset about this whole thing, so...
Can we stop about that and I explain to you why that happened?
Okay, and you were very nice about it, but you know what? The, the, the bottom line is, taxes are going up, and as time has gone, as time goes on, and, and everybody starts making money, and, 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 you know, all the progress is being, being achieved, people don't mind, I don't mind paying the taxes. When you look at a small-time guy, and I'll leave at this, like the yogurt place, like Jason, who maybe relies on, on a little special when people drive by. I mean, he doesn't even have a parking space out in front of his place or, or any kind of parking for someone to stop for, for yogurt. So, that could be, uh, you know, something you guys could consider, rather than saying, "Oh gee, I wanna abolish all A-frames." Um, look at small people like that who don't have the money like Tri-Tech and, you know, don't even, their customers can't even get to their place to, to, to park. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm very upset over the parking, and we shouldn't be talking about A-frames, we should be talking about the real things.
Now, back to parking. How many times did you call me?
Called you twice in the past few weeks.
Did you leave a message?
I talked, I talked to people in the village and they told me you would call me back.
Did you leave a message for me?
I left a message with one of the secretaries for you to call me back. I talked to Dennis Smith.
I didn't get that message.
Dennis, if you wanna speak on my behalf?
Yeah, I spoke to Dennis.
Oh, I spoke to Dennis and I told him, I told him I left a message, and he said, "I didn't get it."
I talked to, to John, and he will call you.
That's what Dennis told me. You told me that you were gonna call you, you said he was gonna call me.
I don't wanna get Dennis to...
Whatever. I did not receive the message.
Does it really matter what he said? I called you a few times.
Next time you call, leave a message.
Let me ask you a question, did Dennis tell you that I, I was concerned about parking?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so you're just waiting to call me, so you don't have to call me, right? You can call me, right?
Next, I don't have your number, Jim.
You can't find me, man, where's the four corners? That's gotta be tough.
Next time you call me, just leave a message.
That's gotta be tough.
Leave a message.
Can I take a copy of that?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Please? This?
Yeah.
I'd make a copy for you tomorrow.
This is Sarnoff, I just wanna ask a question. On the, again, we're trying to gather information on a public hearing to everybody's opinions on, um, the potential legislation for the A-frames. When we do it, it's gonna enable everybody to do it. There are signs, as you make some good examples of some signs that count on the very people, you know, the older people. Those kind of people count on foot traffic. There was testimony at the last public hearing, there were certain businesses, real estate agencies, that wanted to sign out front as well. My question, and as a property owner, I'm a property owner, where we stop it, that we say you can get one and you can't? Should every law office have one? Should every insurance agency have one? Should it be put in front of United Savings Bank? Should we put two out in front of my office?
I agree.
But this, so, out in front of Melody Music? Should we put one in front of the baby guy? Should the shoe repair guy have one? Should Bolt's Shoes Stores? Should Rose Jewelers? If we put it on every single spot, I'm just trying to make the point of, and again, I appreciate it very much as a landlord perspective, if the next landlord next to you wants to have his tenants have the same thing, and he has three tenants inside, I don't know how many of these, every business has, let's just say four, whatever. Those are four in a one-block building, or one building that has four tenants of relatively modest-sized stores compared to your, your corner. So, if they have four signs in a row, because they're in front of their building, well, my question to you is, if we do the legislation, how much is too much? And then if we, where do we draw the line? And then doesn't it dilute everybody's signs anyway? If everybody gets one and it is lined up along Main Street?
I understand that, and as I said, you know, that's definitely a concern, and, um, I really feel that that's something that you really have to sit down, in my opinion, with the chamber, with David, and I think everybody is reasonable where you have to, I want us to sit down and find out what's fair for everybody as far as priorities. I mean, that has to be a decision that made in the chamber, and both of you have to make and, and say, "Well, let's, let's look at each business and look at, you know, what really matters." Maybe when you guys drive down Main Street, what really matters as far as an A-frame? Maybe it doesn't mean as much to them, or, or, maybe it doesn't mean anything to, to certain people.
What if you said just restaurants?
Yeah, you know what? It's not for me to, to, to tell, to, this is not my, I would, I would sit here and say, you know, I already told you, as far as my business is concerned, I do a lot of advertising, I have my sign on, on, on the building. I don't need A-frames, okay? Why do I put them there? Because I don't wanna get into it, you know, there's other people in the area that's, that's moved in there that...
It's part of the issue, it's advertising.
Well, you know what? Everybody puts them all over the place, so...
Advertising.
I see, I see it loud in the walkway where people walk across Main Street, and I kept my sign away from that corner because I told people, it, it, someone's gonna trip over it, somebody's gonna get hurt. I understand, I'm on your side as far as that's concerned. But I kept my A-frame, the one that I've had, probably the first one to put an A-frame out in Patchwork years ago. I had my walk to the side where that garbage can used to be, and I used to put it up against the garbage can, because it's a thing, the liability. If somebody's walking by, I have a wet shirt against the garbage can, it's heavy, I have a chain and everything, and it's not going anywhere. When people drive by during the rush, it was something great to say. When the parking meter machine came in and the garbage bin went by, I figured I don't wanna get in the way of the, the machine, somebody might trip over it, so I saw the guy, the new guy across the street, puts his sign there, and I told people of my concerns, it's a big sign, and he was actually putting it in the walkway where people could trip over it.
He's been told to move it out.
Okay, well, he doesn't.
We had a very careful, many years ago, we had a very careful ADA compliance audit, where they walked around town, um, trustee Dean, that was a trustee, and they walked around town and they assessed all of the crosswalks, they assessed the ramps. Those are very, very important areas that have to be kept clean for liability, both for the property owner, clear I should say.
I agree.
Uh, for the property owner, but also for the village.
Now, how many tenants do you have upstairs?
Officers upstairs?
Yeah. Different, different offices.
Roughly, off the top of my head, uh, my property manager takes care of a little bit, uh, roughly seventeen to twenty?
Seventeen to twenty.
Plus, you know, and, and again, I wanna get back to the four corners.
No, 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 I don't wanna get back.
Okay, 'cause they're, that's their complaint, they're not complaining about A-frames.
It's a different, it's a different, different, this is, we're talking about sandwich boards.
I'm just telling you what they're talking, talking to me about.
You've been heard loud in the picture, alright. You got seventeen to twenty tenants upstairs. What if, again, here's a what-if, what if each one of those tenants wanted to have a sandwich board to advertise their business?
Tell them what, you're on the second floor, you can't, you can't, you can't...
Well, there already are.
Who used to make that decision?
There already are.
The yoga, right? Do they have a sandwich board?
No, the yoga shop doesn't. No, but there's an accountant in Jim's building, there's someone in...
Well, he has an A-frame outside the door, which, in my opinion, from day one, when I bought the building, he had that there. I don't think he should have it. He's on the second floor.
But who makes that determination?
He's got a sign on his window. But you know what? That's not my choice to make, that's how you have to decide. But, but, if, if you feel that you, there's too many A-frames in Patchwork Village, then sit down with the chamber, sit down with everybody, how does that be? And you know what? Make a law or rule that states...
Well, that's what, that's what happens to this hearing, we started out meeting with the committee with the chamber. And then we had the hearing, and this is the second hearing, and we're speaking a lot of comment from the business community and from the residents, so it's not as if we haven't done this.
I apologize, I wish I could have your last part.
But, I'd like to ask the attorney, I mean, from a legislative standpoint, how do we, as a board, determine if certain businesses are happening on the stand? Is that problematic?
I think we could do that, because if we become the second-floor tenants, some of those tenants are gonna complain about it. If we say only restaurants, well, then the realtors and the lawyers are gonna come in and complain about it, they want it. And if we say, okay, only retail...
But is that something that can be challenged in a higher court, legislature?
Uh, you know, it, it's a possibility, but I would say it would probably be okay. Only, again, it's commercial speech, we can draw much tighter lines on it, but I think the point is, the general point is, trying to draw that line, and where do you draw it?
I really don't think many people in my building, upstairs offices, are relying on retail traffic, people driving by. They know who they are, like the healthcare facility I have, the, the, the daily classes, they don't need an A-frame outside saying, "Hey, come to our class." We have attorneys that, you know, they don't need an A-frame outside. If, if you need that much business from, from people driving by, they're not, they're not upstairs in my building to get retail traffic off the street. They're there to, you know, they get a good price, a quality building, and, and they're up there for, for that reason, they're not up there to, to, yes. But you know what? That's a different thing you have to address with, with, with them. That's something that, you know, you know, if, if you, if you feel that he should have his A-frame outside, then that's something you have to, you have to address with them and maybe make some up for you. Second-floor tenants, you could tell that accountant, "Listen, if you need that much business from the street, then go rent a storefront on Main Street and put in a permit to get an A-frame, or, or put a sign out there to get more people." These businesses that, these bars, it's so competitive as it is already, there's a lot of bars and restaurants in Patchwork Village. There's, uh, the yogurt place, there's Jamie with Bellavino, you know, there's a lot of places, and they have specials, they have different things. And you know what? I'm just here to speak on behalf of them, and I feel that it's fair for them, they should have these signs. Now, other retail places, I don't wanna be selfish. I could care less if I have an A-frame. Would it be nice? Yeah, I think it helps my business, people drive by, they see it. If it's gonna become a nuisance to everybody, and it's gonna make life miserable for Patchwork Village, I'll do what's best for the village of Patchwork. But I'm not standing here, or else I'll be fighting for myself. Do I want my A-frame to stay? You could regulate it, you could say, "We need this, this, that." I want mine to stay, don't, don't misunderstand me. But, if there's gotta be certain rules and certain ones have to go, I feel that, uh, the businesses that warrant it, warrant this, if they, they could come, it could be an individual basis, where they could come and plead their case to you.
There's not to be standards from a legislative standpoint.
Well, it has to be, uh, you have, it's up to you, you have, you have to make that rule and look at the legalities of it and feel what's best for the village and, and, and for the people there, but, you know, like I said, uh, with Jason, uh, and, you know, um, my brother next door, Bellavino, Scotty, I mean, all these guys who own bars and restaurants, I feel that it's, it's fair for them to have something out where people are driving by and they see what's going on. It's only gonna draw more business to the village, too. People might be driving by to go to Velpore, going somewhere else, or someone's going down to the beach, and they say, "Oh, look, you know, they have, they have a, a great lunch special." You know, they're gonna park their car, take a fine parking, and they're gonna comply on the plane.
You know, we, we understand that, I believe a lot of villagers, and a lot of villagers do have them banned completely. Um, but we looked at it from the standpoint of, we didn't, we don't wanna hurt the businesses, and we understand that it's important, but we have these other obligations of aesthetics and of safety. And when Jack talked about a fee, uh, we looked at some communities that the fee goes to what they call a revocable bond that protects the village from liability. So, that's, it wouldn't be so the village could line their coffers with more fees, but that that money would be directed in such a mechanism that would protect us from getting sued. So, that's, you know, so it could be considered as well.
I think there's a lot of liabilities, a lot of liabilities in, in Patchwork Village. When people soak around parking lots six times, they get parking, there's gonna be a lot of fender benders in Patchwork Village also. Do you guys think about the liabilities?
And those people are insured, but we're talking about, we're talking about advertising on public ground that we're responsible for, that right now we have no control over, okay? So, that's nothing to do, you can't compare that to someone getting into a car.
Well, I'm just, you know, people's safety too, right? I mean, someone gets into a car, and, and, and they may get rushed to the hospital for having an accident, so for now, six times.
Thanks for your comments.
I would just like to say on the record that Deputy Mayor Jack Freeger is working very hard on the parking situation, and...
I'm sure he is, but my, and this should've been addressed long before. There's, there should've been a plan in place long before the Tri-Tech project, something.
What plan?
Well, I, I gave, I may, I...
Let's stick to the public hearing in hand, okay?
Okay, next time, if you ever wanna sit down with me, if you wanna stick around, the public can be heard, you can stick around. I, I called you in the past, if you ever wanna, I'll come down at any time you like, we'll sit down and talk by tournament, and we'll go, we'll talk about that.
Call me on my cell.
You wanna give it to me?
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Give me your cell number.
On the record? Seven nine zero.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be close, it's gonna be a little bit, a little bit... Just before we stop, uh, David, can I ask you to step up a second?
Sure.
As representative in the chamber of Congress, what do you think would be the reaction if we limited this to restaurants only?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, most of the people who are defending keeping him are the restaurants, that's where the loudest cry is. So, certainly, it's, you know, it's hard for me to, to make that statement without knowing for sure. There's been a couple of, uh, I know H&R Block was one that certainly chimed in, at least to me, that they would not wanna see them banned, that they feel useful. And so, I could see that individual certainly feeling cut out if it was, uh, just restaurant-only, but, you know, uh, you make, you know, the village, I don't think anybody's arguing, there's excellent points here. I, I guess with some of the business people, what I'm hearing as a representative in the chamber is that uh, there's a little stress on Main Street because of the parking, and it's not about parking, and I think... And I think the timing of now picking on sandwich boards is, is just made them feel a little picked on. I'm not saying that was ever the intention, but there's a feeling, just giving in the timing of when this is coming out. And I think some of the, you know, there are, certainly, and not to say you shouldn't look into this, because whether anything's happened before or not doesn't mean you shouldn't take this legislation on, and it's, it's an issue that needs to be dealt with. But on the priority of things, certainly, I've never seen any complaint about sandwich board signs. I've never heard of anybody ever coming to a village board meeting complaining about sandwich board signs. I mean, until Lori, actually, until we had the meeting, then Lori actually showed me some pictures that really kind of showed you what the look was. You know, that walkway's your all the time, because that's certainly something that stood out to me, is like, this is horrible. But it can, can be cleaned up, and it can be worked on. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't address the issue, but I think there is this conservative business owners that is this really that, something that we should be struggling with right now?
About timing? The timing is because the proliferation has been great. I mean, because we have more success, more businesses on Main Street and less vacancies. But, you know, when I am coming past the congregational church, and I have to make a beeline around this new sign that the dress store has, and then the, you know, the next shop, the bagel shop, and he's got one this big, and they've got them right in the middle, and then there's one here. Are you, are you kidding me? You know, so it's not about timing, the timing is because they are everywhere.
And you, and you make excellent points. I mean, I'm even listening as you make more points, I, I hear what you're saying. It's a lot more difficult to try to regulate this than to ban it. There's no doubt about it, because regulating it has gotta open up a lot of questions.
Well, you sat, you sat in our meeting, you know, and, and we went round and round, and certain people like the chalkboards, and other people don't want the chalkboards, and...
But that was one meeting of a handful of people. I, that's why I'm saying, let's continue to meet on that a little bit. I think the village has made an excellent case, and I'll certainly pass that along of why you want to try to, you know, that why the village, it's easy for them to ban them because regulating it opens up a lot of questions. But I would like to just give that off, that this process that we started a little bit longer.
Well, I think if we want to have a meeting in March, and if some other people want to join in, with the, with the, with the group, we can certainly do that.
And I would say, let's come up, let me come up with the specific regulations, and have that legislation proposed.
Well, we have a...
And make that like a, a choice, what would you prefer?
We have, we have a proposal already, but, you know, that could be modified, and how it varies the impact.
Yeah, based on that, that's all, just, I mean, you guys are, are working well with us. You've included us on the meetings, you're taking in all the input. You know, I don't think, you know, I don't, everybody wants to work together on this issue. I just feel, there, there is a little fear if they're banned, that they just gotta feel like, uh, you know, given the climate right now of the new testing of parking meters and the parking situation, I think that adds to some of the angst that maybe wouldn't have been there if this was discussed maybe six months later or six months prior, so, that's all. But I, but again, appreciate it, look forward to that opportunity. I'm hoping that we'll continue discussion and at least give the finding a legislative cure to this possibility.
Well, you know, what might be a, a, a good idea, if we can have some kind of meeting similar to this, where we're all here, any board members who want to come to listen, not a, not a public hearing or anything, just where your, your group of people can come and voice their opinion like people did tonight.
Absolutely, I mean, certainly, I, I, I'm in that shy...
Well, we're not in a discussion format, like a work session.
But yeah, but before, with discussion, but not, not a, not a board meeting, but where, you know, how many people here are store owners tonight? Right? There are way many more in the village who we could probably get some good input from.
I mean, I'll set up a, a, a special meeting for it with the chamber, we'll come up, I mean, we have a general meeting at the end of the month. The twenty, I could use that as an opportunity that we could just clear that agenda for that meeting and make it just about that issue, since it's a regularly scheduled meeting. I'm more than willing to do that.
What night, what night is it?
It's a Tuesday night, it's the fourth Tuesday of the month, the twenty fifth.
Is that the restaurant committee meeting?
I think it might be. Well, Jamie's away, and I did see that it was complicated, I was gonna try it.
We're gonna have...
But maybe that'll, I could have the restaurant meeting and everybody kind of come together, and we could still...
Because that was the meeting that I was gonna speak to them about the funding stuff, so...
Yes, yes, but we could still, that could still be a trend.
Well, maybe we could do it, like, separate from that and do it in March, I mean, we're not...
Oh, absolutely, I mean, there's every fourth Tuesday of the month is a general membership meeting, so maybe I could use that as the opportunity to give them, you know, that one bite to...
You know, I, I, I just want to stress, and, and, you know, just a couple of people made comments, and Jim specifically made comments that, you know, there are other bigger issues in the village that need to be handled, which we are handling those other issues, but every issue is an important issue. Aesthetics and safety and all that, it's just part of the big picture here that we're trying to deal with, the success of the village. Now, all these people who have these successful restaurants in the village are, you know, bringing in all these people who drive cars, who need to park. It's, it's, the, the situation here is based on the fact that the village is now successful, and now we gotta deal with all this stuff. So, Jim, I, you know, he's adamantly that, that parking is the big problem. Well, it is a big problem, and we're dealing with that problem, but sandwich boards are a problem, litter is a problem, vandalism is a problem. There's many, many problems in this village that we have to deal with, and none of whom takes priority over the others, you know. You've gotta deal with them all at the same time. And, you know, David, you've been very, very cooperative and helpful in this whole thing, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you keeping the dialogue open and looking into such, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Donald? Don Boxman, Sixty Conner Street, I just had a thought. What about a trial balloon? A temporary moratorium, say, a week, two weeks, or a month, ban them and see what effect it really has on the restaurants? I mean, maybe they think these things are wonderful, and maybe they're not worth that much. You know, let them experience it, then they can come back and say, hey, I'm down fifty percent of business, which I doubt, I can't imagine. You know, because how many people driving down Main Street are gonna stop because they see a sandwich on sale? You know, they're gonna go around and park, they're walking by, and maybe, so, just a thought.
And what my thought is, it's really a walking thing, because, you know, when Main Street is full of cars, you can't see them.
Sure.
So, but...
If you, I did a little research on the internet, so it's really anecdotal, especially for restaurants and food establishments, removing sandwich boards decreases business. There's absolutely no question about it. How much it does, it's not really quantitative, but it definitely decreases business for those kinds of...
Mr. Bojack, is he here?
John Bojack, I just want to pull up on the question I asked at the first public hearing. I don't know if there's been any more thinking about it, which is, this entire conversation's been focused on Main Street, but there are sandwich boards elsewhere in the village. So, that's, and the last time the mayor wasn't sure exactly whether this legislation was...
I think this legislation is specific to the downtown industrial-centric sidewalk center.
That's what's happening?
But maybe some things that come out of this, like having them tied down or whatever, could inform other areas, so it's something you have to look at, but is this, does it say D three or D two?
It is the, the intention is that it's supposed to be focused on downtown because of the sidewalks. Sidewalks in other places are important too, but quite frankly, the concentration is on Main Street like nowhere else in the village.
All right, so I'm not gonna mention the business, there are four, there are four signs presently.
Right. You mentioned it in the last hearing.
I missed it last time.
Yeah, there are cats out of the bay, you're right.
It's already on the...
Right, it's in the middle of the room.
And I think sometimes, you know, I, I, so I think sometimes they put those, those signs right on the sidewalk. So, that, under the present law, that would be legal, illegal?
Oh, it's like everywhere else, it's legal now, you could place them there, so, we're trying to regulate that issue too.
I always thought it was on their property, but I'll have to look next time, I know by...
Two are on their property, two are not, I, I believe, and I haven't seen them since I, actually, this again, the last meeting, they seem to have decreased in their number.
The snow has that effect.
Yes, perhaps. But that was, that was, and they're not the only one. I mean, there are other businesses also on the Grand Avenue that have signs as well, but, and probably other parts of the village, so.
So it should be up for discussion within what we're considering as to whether that area is included or, you know, something we have to discuss.
Right, because four signs create some, they create people looking at, divisions are a high-traffic street. You got people looking at signs to slow traffic down, you're blocking potential traffic. These are issues relatable to what we, right. Not only because I'm one business, but that's the one that's happening, drive by every time.
You know, this is what I think makes a good point, I mean, it's the aesthetics that the deputy mayor referred on for was the intention of the legislation. The ARB was very hard crafting legis, crafting signs and working hard with the professional signmakers that are in town who do a very good job as well on crafting an image for these commercial businesses. To say that four signs on a sidewalk does not have an impact is not realistic. I mean, that has a visual aesthetic that circumvents the ARB's intention to try to give a certain look to these properties and to the village.
I mean, it's, it's visual lit.
Well, I just, this came up, and so...
But no, thank you for bringing it to our attention, because really, I think our focus was on, was Main Street's situation.
Because you might have a situation that I think of, that some businesses are gonna be privileged to have signs, and others are gonna have no signs.
Well, if they have it on their own property, there's really not much that we, you know...
Oh, okay, okay.
For instance, by me, the, the Milk Depot has one, or the, or the storage area has one on their own property.
Or Seven-Eleven, they have it on their own property on the grass there.
Okay, I got, I got you, all right, thank you.
But we could have them to tie in, because it's not...
Already the ARB regulates the size of the paper signs a lot when you're on a storefront.
Well, that's legis, that's the legislation.
That's what I'm talking about, so now you're regulating that, and now you're regulating an A-frame size, so you kind of keep taking away from business to generate sales, and I think it's, it's, it really creates a problem. I like that the different pubs and restaurants could say, maybe there's a jazz guy in there, my wife and I can go there, maybe have something to eat and listen to jazz, and I think it, it creates an atmosphere, a really nice vibe in the village, and I think it helps the village, and I think you guys are losing the picture of that. It, it creates, you know, some kind of feel for this. About ten years ago, we wouldn't even have this conversation because you didn't have anybody here. It was still was empty, now we have, we're, we're privileged to have, so let's keep them full, and let's, let's keep that vibe going. You know, I think, I think that's what you need to do. We're already over-regulating with the paper signs on the windows and this, no neon, and that, and that. We continually keep going, eventually, there's no advertising whatsoever for the businesses. And I think you're, you're going down the wrong street. All right, so what should we do here, Danny?
Can we make a motion to re, I, I would propose to leave the comment period, close the public hearing and leave the comment period by written comment open through April first, and then we'll review the comments in April and make a decision in May. That would give us time to meet in March with the, with so much, but that's, that's my lead.
Second. Second, old favor, all right, I vote it. So we are closed. We'll have the comments.
If they want some, they have comments, you have to have comments.
There were comments to the clerk's office. Maybe we'll work together to put together some sort of meetings.
Absolutely.
Talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
And I would suggest that you get everybody out who's got, got the skin in this game to...
Absolutely, no, I mean, I'm even gonna encourage all of them to get together, and we'll come up with something, at least a, a proposal from the chamber that says, consider this as the legislation in row, as a starting point. I know you guys have got something too, I haven't actually seen exactly what you guys have maybe ready to propose. If you want, I mean, if I get a copy of that, Lori, I'd love to pass that around and at least start getting inputs. I don't know if it's ready, you know, ready for prime time, as I say.
It's, yeah, it's fairly simple, it doesn't contain everything that we discussed. This was actually created prior, this was the first draft that was created prior to our actual meeting that day. But it's kind of just...
Yeah, I mean, I, I would love, I mean, you kind of put the board on us a little bit, to come up with something that we can agree on.
Look, if, if the chamber and, and the store owners can agree to say, look, all right, this is only, well, you allow restaurants to do this. That's not a bad thing.
That shows our willingness to, I understand.
All right, because it seems to me that, according to Jim, and according to other people, it's the restaurants and those kind of places, like the Bagel Place and the, the VIP and the other places, they're the ones who are gonna get hurt most by this. So maybe we just limit it to food establishments.
They need that punch, they can't put one out.
That's right.
You've got a mysterious way. I mean, but most of what we're dealing with right now, but I mean, there's some more restaurants, so it really is...
Yes, Dennis.
David, do you give our comments?
There's a B I D. Listen, some of you, you know, if we do that, first, I think we should have. I think that they should, they should be uniformated to them, as far as signs and how they, how they are stationed. I think they should be unique enough so that each business can display what we need to display on it, but we need to be able to control how big they are and where we put them. Now, if we make that specific just to restaurants, and we're taking people, two of them that I can think of off the top of my head, Carl Leam is in the vacuum cleaner store, they've had those signs out there for like forty years. So how do you tell them you can't have it now? And that whole row has, has these signs, right down to the, the video post. So I think it would be too selective, and I think we would be discriminating against the, of the businesses who probably do benefit this idea.
I believe that to be the case, but, you know, there's gonna come a time when every business is gonna have a sandwich board. It's just a matter of time, or nearly every business.
Well, maybe we have to figure out a way to make that happen in a, in a tasteful way. And that's, when we come up, when we craft this legislation, maybe we should project the following. What are we gonna look like in ten years, and what do we want to look like in ten years? And assume everybody's gonna have some kind of a sandwich board. How do we want that to be displayed? Or do we want that to be something that's affixed to the, of the building, that's perpendicular? I mean, that's the type of thing that I would say.
Could you grandfather people in, people who've been, have had it? Stop it now, and now? I, I think that would be...
Problematic.
Very robust, problematic.
Okay.
Just a question, Dennis.
Sure.
Dennis, do, do you think that professionals, accountants, attorneys, rules, that you think they need sandwich boards?
Personally, I don't think so, for the, I think Jimmy might have said it by four. You, you need an office, but if you have a practice, your clientele knows who you are, whether it's word of mouth, whether it's advertising in a, in a, in a professional periodical, I, I don't think that if you're a lawyer and accountant, that sandwich board is gonna say, hey, I gotta go in because he's got a board out on the sidewalk. So, again, I don't want to be discriminatory, but I think they would probably benefit the less runner, the least runner, because they've got a constituency based on their profession, and I don't think that that's how they want to advertise it.
Thank you.
You go to the closet, you're in the closet. Thank you, everybody, for your input on that. All right. Resolution order authorizing the replacement of roof at Petrow Theater at a maximum estimated cost of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. It also authorized the issuance of three hundred fifty thousand dollars in zero bonds for the project.
You want to comment on it?
Yeah, well, okay, just...
That is really a ban, which is a bond anticipation note, which will be a five-year ban. But by doing it this way, we're allowed to go out an additional five years if we need to, and bond it for another five years. Believe it or not, a roof is only bondable up to ten years, even though it's a life of the very water foot. So that's what that is. The eight hundred thousand, the sewer lines, that is also a ban, which we could bond after the five-year period, before before it. And that, as you used to life, I believe forty years, we could bond after forty years. So these are bans, but they have the, the, we could bond them if we want to. Chances are, we're gonna do the sewer lines for a longer period. Hopefully, the, the roof will pay off in the five years. But if we, if we decide not to, we'll be able to go out another five years, so that's what that's all about.
And I believe, Tom, you're still in talks with the I D as far as contributing to that.
Yeah.
Dennis, do you, where is that?
Step down.
Sorry. So...
Yeah, the village has made a request to the Business Improvement District to make a contribution to support the cost of the roof, and the business for, that's not made a decision about how much, or what, that's what happened.
Any other comments by the board on the first one? Well, what's the cost of that true ban, is, you know?
I mean, it's the rate, you know, three now, maybe we have three percent, five percent.
And just the thirty-five thousand, you know, a year, seventy thousand over five years if you want to pay, or seventy plus interest, which is not that much. The eight hundred thousand, you know, that, like, you go out for the four years, twenty thousand, you get plus... And I could see we probably could go a longer term with that, but I, I think we probably pay the three hundred fifty off in five, but we have the option not to.
And if we pay for this, eight hundred thousand dollar bond would be coming from our sewer tax.
I would say whatever sewer excess we have, whatever sewer surplus we have, we could use for that, I guess, and the sewer tax.
So it would necessarily be coming out of our general fund, so...
Not necessarily.
But it would come out of the sewer line.
Yeah, we do have to attach, plus we have a sewer surplus which is built up, so between the two, you know, we can handle it very easily.
So that the cost of that wouldn't necessarily be borne by the resident... So that, um, the cost of that wouldn't necessarily be borne by the resident, uh, by those that attend it.
Not by, I don't, we don't have any anticipation of the additional signs. We're not sure, but at this point, it looks like it's something that we can afford to pay on a low basis from the revenues that we have, you know.
Do you know what the rough estimate is and what our surplus is in the, in the sewer?
I know a surplus now, little surpluses between three, five, and four. The sewer, I'm not sure. I don't know why, do you remember, half a million, five million?
I think it's about that, after the drawdown from the governor's legislation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's close to six, seven.
I mean, half, half a million is probably around six, seven.
The sewer, uh, forty-year life expectancy. So I think the note says ten years or something like that.
No.
No.
No, it says more than five.
They don't, the roof is ten max.
The roof is, yeah.
The bands, the bands for five. Well, and then determine, you know. The band will fly on.
Correct. Section three.
I like to pay the roof off in five. The sewer line, I don't want a problem.
The roof, um... I had made a suggestion at the last, one of the last meetings that I was intending for is to, for the theater to levy a, a restoration fee to the sale of a ticket today. And notice that that was actually levied on some, actually purchased a ticket to the neck. But now, Tom, who knows that that is associated to it. So when the theater is selling these tickets and we're earmarking money towards the restoration or maintenance or rehabilitation and needs, how is that money getting journal phone, the sale of those tickets? Is there a separate line in our, in our budget right now? We have to change that, so I'll check and see where that comes from. We don't talk to any of that, we haven't moved that over. You know, we're all quite aware of the asset of theater and what it means to, to the community as a whole. And it just, um, you know, I'd like that, uh, the cost of that roof, to handle the needs of theater to be borne by the patrons of the theater and be shared by the business owners of the community. So it's just, you know, three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're spending on the theater's roof. You know, hopefully we'll be able to collect some money from the B I D and collect some money from the sales of these tickets to, to offset those costs as well. So it, um, you know, there'll always be need to do something in the theater. And it just, um, I think by that D, it just helps us collect some revenue to do that, so. So at this point, I guess, I'll second that motion for the, the three hundred fifty thousand dollar serial bond or ban for the theater roof.
All favor?
Aye.
Tom?
Yes?
Uh, so we'll do the second resolution. Resolution authorizing the decommissioning of a pump station and installation of sewer lines in and for the village at a maximum estimated cost of eight hundred thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of eight hundred thousand bonds for the project. Uh, do you want to explain this a little bit, what this was all about?
This is the pump station at South Ocean Avenue, which is located under the Furman Park. South Ocean Avenue, pump station's trustee Keys will also speak to it. But superintendent Dean and the sewer engineers have certified multiple times, the South Ocean Avenue pump station is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, in the system.
Yeah.
And is in overtime.
Okay, any questions?
When does that work in St. Paul's?
I couldn't play it to now at much of a moment. It's on the, I think, yeah, the leaves. It will be in the next two weeks.
No, I'm just thinking because, you know, with the...
We don't have reconstruction plans.
Yeah.
So it's early in work, so.
With the work that the C D A's scheduling on the wall there, the restaurant, those two projects, gonna... See, this, this'll be afterwards.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't be around that same time, because that would be a problem.
That would be.
Other questions? There's a motion, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right. Resolution, uh, accepting the transfer of County Road sixty-five from West Avenue to the village boundary line to the county of Suffolk. Attorney Egan, can you explain this a little bit?
Yes, just the transfer from the county to the village for control over that roadway. It's a, it's roughly, they already turned over the West Avenue to the village. This is now from the intersection of West Avenue to the village boundary line down what's called County Road sixty-five, which goes down Division Street to the corner of River Avenue. Makes a left from south to Week Street, and Week Street right to the village boundary. And the county spent a lot of money rehabilitating that road, installing a road paving, resurfacing drainage. It's been inspected by superintendent Dean and trustee Keys, and they want to transfer the ownership to us.
Okay, make a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Closed? B I D reporter. Dennis, I apologize that you were involved in that.
Oh, that's okay. Hey, I've got, we're childrens.
The first meeting that Dennis and I ever had, I was a brand new trustee, it was about sandwich boards.
Well, you know, that's the irony, because we had had that meeting in about two thousand and eight.
You and me and Joe and Brandy.
Exactly right. And I had had one in two thousand and six, right, right here. Well, there used to be a big table here, and this wall used to end up here. And I guess there wasn't a lot of sandwich boards. We talked about what we might do, what we could do. It was tabled, and then we got back, so now we've probably got about three hundred of them out there. And, yeah, the time has come to take a look at them and come up with a solution that works for the village. This was the businesses that are, that to some extent depend on.
Sweetie, did you get my video of the gates, bud?
I did, yeah. And as a sidebar, I went by Sunday, there was a trade there, the gates were up, so I had it worse, gentlemen. I will talk about that. My apologies for the, for the sidebar. But Deputy Mayor Correa, trustees, Mr. Steele, Attorney Egan, Mr. Crossick, ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith with the Business Improvement District report. Uh, quickly with the New York Main Street Grant, we don't have a lot new at this point, but there's a lot that's starting to happen right now. As we speak, the interior renovation at Two East Main Street, which happens to be the budget by itself, is starting tonight. And it's going to be a redo of the, the interior, the walls and, and the ceiling and the lighting, the whole interior look of the, the building. And we expect a three to, three to four week, five weeks at, at the most turnaround. I've gotten the necessary paperwork that I've needed from, uh, two hundred East Main Street. Uh, that's the Medhi Health Clinic, so I'm going to set that up tomorrow with Albany. Uh, that will probably take place, and that project will start in about two weeks, no, no later than two weeks. And the other thing that we're going to start taking a look at and planning is the Streetscape project, which is going to encompass the, the East Main Street sidewalk project. I'm currently working with Marion and the, the C D A on it.
What time is your meeting tomorrow?
It is at eleven o'clock.
It's here?
Right here, yeah, probably in this conference room over here.
All right, I'm going to try to make it a...
If you could, it'd be great.
Yeah, I have something in ten, so I, I want to be a few minutes.
Okay, if you can. I'm sure it'll, you know, it's not going to be all quick, so we'll be there. And, you know, just talking about the sidewalks, I wanted to thank the advance and Lucy for the article on the sidewalks as well as other things that were, that we are doing in patchwork, that are, that is happening. It's good to get it out there in the paper, so everybody gets a chance to look at it. And if they're not at this meeting, they don't hear what we have to say, they, they have a, a sense of what we're trying to get accomplished. The meeting tomorrow, though, is with the building owners and the C D A. C D A's going to fund the project. Uh, the purpose of the meeting tomorrow is to discuss payment procedures with the, the building owners and to come up with dates and talk about the Streetscape design. Now, ideally, weather permitting, and we don't have that, so normally we would like to start March thirty-first and be done no later than April eleven, well before Easter. And of course, that's a concern to, for only to come factory, as well as some other businesses that are there. Uh, so hopefully that's going to, that's going to happen. Met with Huntington Station bid members and a security firm about a week and a half ago. We further discussed the security surveillance cameras. I've identified three places where I think we might be able to start. They are the Patch Art Theater for the Performing Arts. We went back in there and we saw clearly, we took another look at that system. We can incorporate some of that, probably add one new camera and a new DVD. Ten South Ocean Avenue, which is the Furman Building on the Four Corners. And a location that will be near barbecue on West Main Street. Now, if we get that done, the type of camera that we're going to use will have the ability, let's say on, on the Furman Building, to look down South Ocean Avenue, to take a part of East Main Street and see that, as well as look up, not, not west, that's why the other one's there, but look down North Ocean Avenue. So you'll have a lot of scope from there. The barbecue one would be able to look down west and east, as well as across to the Tritech site, the Havens Avenue. And the theater will have the same capability in the front on East Main Street. So we pretty much have a pretty nice chunk of Main Street and Ocean Avenue if we can get those three things done. Now, we have put ten, we've asked, we've appropriated ten thousand dollars on next year's twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen B I D budget to get this accomplished. The bid board tomorrow will discuss that budget. Hopefully, this will be something that stays in, and I have a feeling if we can get this started somewhere, it will become contagious. We can find the funding as we go forward to get it done. It works wonders in Huntington Station. Suffolk County P D is on it a hundred and ten percent. And I think it would just benefit a lot of the things that we sometimes talk about here with vandalism and this happening and that happening, and would have, would have a record of exactly what is happening. So I look forward to that. Other than that, bid budget, we're hoping for about a hundred and sixty-three-three next year. That's only because we had some, some funds that were not extended this year. The actual take was a little over a hundred and fifty thousand. So again, we're on a declining budget, and that's a large part because of construction at the Four Corners, the West Avenue conversion from commercial to residential. So it's a little bit of a struggle now, but we've got enough funds. This year should be another great year coming up, and we'll keep on going. Unless there's any questions for me.
Just a clarification on the security cameras. The, the security cameras will be monitored by our, what you call it when you have a...
Dispatch.
Dispatch, right. And the Suffolk County Police will also have interactive internet access to the recordings. So it'll be seven twenty-four. It's, it's a great technology. Do we need to legislate anything about it? You just do it.
No, no.
I have a question. Are there any plans for any more garbage cans on Main Street? We had some comments earlier about, and I don't know, you know, do we have a lot of garbage cans?
The only, I think they, they, they become a little less as you go down East Main Street, as you get by growing. The goodness is, that can be incorporated as part of the Streetscape project, for that area, you know.
Definitely should.
So, uh, you know, we, we can't put some, we talked about East Main Street, but as far as the B I D having any additional funding aside from that, I think the simple answer would be no.
I'm just curious, just, just raw, raw, really.
No, that's a good point. And the reason, with the Furman Building, the reason to, to select that building as one of the three is with the twenty-ten grant, we had put a security assistant in his building. So he's actually got a lot of the equipment that we need to make this compatible with what we want to do. And I talked to Joel, he's on board, we can do it. And what we really need from him is the internet, and we're good to go.
That's great.
Dennis, any comment about the theater's roof commitment by the bid board? Has there been any further discussion about that?
It's on the agenda, I'm sorry, it's on the agenda again tomorrow. I know Mayor Ponte here is going to come in, who's on the agenda as well. Uh, he's going to speak about it a little bit more. But very, very honestly, very candidly, from what I'm sensing, it's, it's something that I don't think has the support of the law. Not that, it's not a good idea. Obviously, it is, it's the most expensive, a precious asset, a valuable asset that we have within the village. It's needed. Uh, everybody agrees that it helps commercial entities. Your comment before, Jerry, was well taken. Uh, I think the fear now is that we just don't have the money, don't follow, to make that commitment. And we're not sure what we're going to get back when everything falls. That's the consensus we'll find out. That's, that's, that's the, the feeling, I'm getting. We'll get a consensus tomorrow at the meeting.
I appreciate that saying here, but, you know, it's something that, um, the business owners probably benefit more by that theater than the residents actually attend events at that theater. And the monetary value that that theater brings to the business community, for them not to be able to make a commitment even for a very short four or five-year period of time is, um, it's a sad situation. I, I hope that they will come to a better decision than that.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think the real fear for them, though, is, for us, I'm a part of, I'm a part of the board, but a part of the organization, is that you don't know what you're going to get back when things start coming back. Now, we're assuming that the B I D tax is going to go back on the development on the Four Corners. We're going to assume it's going to be at least what it was, or maybe something more. We're still, it's an assumption. Is that actually what's going to happen? I don't know. I think that's the fear. That, that question's been raised. What if it doesn't happen? What if it doesn't come back at the same amount? You've made a commitment to give maybe fifty thousand dollars over, over the five years. Well, I guess it'd be more, maybe a hundred thousand dollars over five years. And you're not sure if you're going to get that money back. And we basically are, we're doing everything we need to do now. I mean, we've really grown. Uh, we've grown exponentially over the seven years, with the stuff that we do and the, the past that we take on. But, uh, you know, there's a, it's a, it's a finite pool, there's an end to it.
In defense of Dennis's point, I mean, the entire bid budget is what, like a hundred and sixty?
It's going to be a hundred and sixty-three-three this year, assuming it's going to get passed tomorrow, and I, I think it would. But some thirteen thousand of that has come from below the line. And where did that come from? We had twenty thousand dollars on a crosswalk line for crosswalk upgrades. We spent fifteen thousand five hundred of that three years ago for a crosswalk in front of the theater, which isn't there yet. And it's not there because some of the things have to happen first. It's being stored at D P W. There was forty-five hundred dollars left in that one. We took that. There was a thousand dollars that was left on the, on the five thousand dollar site and that we had granted for the row walkway redevelopment some five, six years ago. We took that back. Unreserved surplus had another six, seven thousand dollars. We took that. So we were able to come up and get the hundred and sixty-three-three that we needed, but there's not a lot of doing with it anymore. And I think that's the main fear that the board members have, particularly over a couple of... I, I understand. Okay. Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis.
Chamber of Commerce.
Hey, everybody. Ben? Uh, and just like the month of February, the reporting is very short. Uh, St. Patrick's events, as I've announced before, are up and coming, you know, March, we'll be here before you know it. Uh, we actually kick off St. Patrick's Day events in this community on February the twenty-third with the passing of the S A S, where we introduce Patrick Moore, will be our grand marshal this year. Uh, there'll be a soda break contest among many of our local restaurants, uh, nice Irish music, and, uh, good old Irish times, I like to tell everybody that, that's Sunday between one and four. Uh, then it'll follow with our St. Patrick's Day parade, March the thirtieth, uh, Sunday. Parade will start at twelve-thirty with the annual running of the May the Road Rise to Meche five K race. Uh, other things that are coming up the next month with the Chamber, uh, we are holding our first networking, business networking event of the year, uh, this Wednesday, the twelfth, at Roast Coffee. It's from seven to nine. Uh, there'll be table displays with all our business members, with our members, with some of their marketing material for people to come and talk to our businesses and them to network, network with each other. Uh, we are inviting the spouses of our, uh, members to come down as well, because Roast has a wonderful Valentine's tree where you can send your lovely significant other a message on their networking tree. And Brian Gallo, a local... a message on their networking tree, and Brian Gallo, a local musician, is also gonna be performing for us that night, so it's a great night. Any Chamber member who comes down gets a nice little discount as well, so if you are a Chamber member, please come down, or a courtesy Chamber member with all our village board is, we invite you to join us as well. As I stated earlier, our general membership meeting's at the Patch Up American Library, February twenty-fifth. Right now, one of our members, who's a CPA, Robert Sick, he's going to do, he does presentations across the county on reading your financial report, and reading between the lines, and how you could take that information and make it work best for your business, and kinda seeing some of the trends and the information that might not pop out at you right away. So that should be a very informative business discussion at that library meeting. And on March the eighth, just to give you a little heads up for March, our, one of our new business Salumet, our new pharmacy on Main Street, joined the Chamber, and we're gonna be holding a grand opening ceremony on March the eighth, it's a Saturday at one P M. Of course, you're all invited down to join us for that as well. I did send the village card over this morning, email, I don't know if we passed around or not, I have copies. You know, we're still working to finalize dates for some of the events. A lot of this was all ironed out and hashed out with the mayor and village trustee Hilton, who are unfortunately here right now. Got a meeting where we had the fifth precinct and a lot of our event committees together. Everything, I think, seemed to be in order from what I understand, it was the main thing right now that I understand to be is the Thursday, July the seventeenth, Live After Five, maybe. There was concern that there might be an event that the music festival might be holding that day. Certainly, we don't wanna, there's no way you could do both in the same night, we recognize that, so I don't know if that's been addressed, or.
Was it? Ten o'clock?
There was one proposal that.
That was, no, that was brought up at the meeting, the fifth precinct did endorse it, as well as the mayor, that we would extend it to ten with the bars being, stopped at nine-thirty, and the music stopped at nine-forty-five. It was just, it was an extension, and they wouldn't start selling until six. They wouldn't do, open up their pens until six o'clock, so it would be an hour shift.
No.
No, nothing to be voted on, on any of it.
Yeah, this is just a proposal, right?
Right, exactly, exactly. This is what came out, I mean, the first half of it is the amended letter. We discussed this, and we had the meeting, then we had the Land Village Board meeting. I kinda, we all, what was, came out of that meeting, the mayor suggested I just put everything in writing for this meeting. I only got it to the clerk this morning, can understand certainly if this was gonna maybe wait to the next meeting, but certainly, you know, we're all getting close now that we do wanna start advertising when these dates are, and I certainly don't wanna advertise anything until we got the approval, of course.
What do we vote on this?
It was on, it's gonna be for Jerry to discuss.
We can talk about it right now since David's here, and, you know, I would be more inclined to perhaps wait until four and Billy come back, but if we were to vote on this right now, I would not be in favor of extending the hours to ten P M. That's something that I may mention at the last time we had this discussion, and I'm still, you know, staying to that opinion that it just, I really don't see the benefit, and when you're weighing against the liability issue and all the other nuisance issues that we deal with when the hours start to get a little bit late, and it's just, you know, if the people are in town, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna leave town, but we can start reopening the streets and start encouraging people to actually go into establishments by nine o'clock. I just, I think by having the street closed and the events occurring up until ten o'clock, it just, everyone will see the benefit of that, but that's my own opinion. I would leave it up to you, Jack, to decide whether you wanna continue to have this discussion, or if you'd rather wait till we have holdback.
Billy's not here either, and he was involved in this.
They will vote at the meeting, Jerry, with the fifth precinct, where certainly this was everything, it was what the crews agreed to at the meeting.
Yeah, I think we should.
I'll make a motion and defer evaluation of this proposal.
Thanks.
Let's just do it.
Yeah.
Second?
So is that for all the events?
It's for this. Just for the Live After Five issue, I think the other things are necessarily is problematic, you know, when it comes to, you know, Oldies Night, or the St. Little Rada Festival.
Which we haven't even, I mean, we kind of, our initial discussion stopped after Oldies Night, just to iron that out, so we haven't even addressed. I mean, what you see from St. Little Rada down on the letter is exactly how it was written on the original letter, because we really haven't touched on that.
Most of these have been voted on yet.
Nothing's been, nothing on this has been officially voted on.
So right now, you would just be seeking approval for Family Fun Night and Oldies Night?
I'll take whatever I can get.
So can I make a motion to approve that, Jerry? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Jerry.
I apologize, I got this document in the office before this meeting, I haven't read it. I don't, I don't think it's fair to, I mean, my village email's broken, okay, so.
No, no, no problem, and I, like I said, I was more expecting that this wouldn't be discussed the next meeting, I was just, you know, I know I had sent the clerk, and certainly there was desire to, I'm more than ready to, but I certainly understand if you wait till the next meeting, it's only a couple more weeks, that would be fine.
Hey, you know I support your stuff.
Yeah, no, again, I was expecting. And I agree.
And I'm honest to David, he did send the email today, I did print it out for the board with no expectation of anybody going on anything today.
Yes, and the same here.
Yeah, just, the village attorney brought something up here, the road closure from four to eleven P M.
Well, that, I mean, it's always, like, if you extended it to ten, there's always been an hourly way to get the people off the street and everything. That's just what the public safety, like, right now, the road closures is till ten o'clock, because nine o'clock, everything ended, and they gave an hour to make sure everybody was cleared off the street, so I'm just going by what the normal procedure would be.
I think that that's correct, I mean, but that's just, the board should just be aware, and the trustee Queen is trying to make the point, that that's the echo effect of the ten o'clock closing.
Which was in all this.
The echo effect is that the eleven o'clock road closure, which really, practically purposes, doesn't mean till eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, eleven twenty.
Well, actually, they get, I mean, I would say that the roads have been cleared in like forty-five minutes, and actually, with this thing, we're gonna, the vendors are gonna.